Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals for our February 28th meeting. We are delighted to have you all here. The large crowd today is swarming for seats, and you are lucky if you get here early to get a seat. Just to warn you, you noticed that we have had some construction out here. We're not clear as to what it is, but it's clearly is closed and exit. So if you do have to exit early, we'd like you to take either the door you came in, or if you take the door, if you go out in the hall and turn left, there's another door down there. It's only 25 cents, but you can get out there in a hurry. So those two exits, please, in case it gets so raucous here that you need to leave. Thank you. With that note, let's begin our meeting with Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. And welcome, Mr. Agarwal. We're pleased to have you here today.
Forced traffic.
That's good. We have three public hearings, continued public hearings, and we have three new ones. So let's begin. We have a full agenda. The first item tonight is the Spice Handler and Brown on Workplace. And this involves a variance requiring a minimum frontage on the street from 25 to zero feet, consideration of a right-of-way to the subject parcel to permit the installation of a standby electrical generator. Is there somebody representing them tonight? I don't believe so. Okay. We have heard from, let me say this, I would move that we open, continue the public hearing on Spice Handler. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have additional information. I'm sorry.
Was there a date for continuing the public hearing? Your next meeting?
No.
Opening the continued public hearing now.
Open. I'm sorry.
Or continue?
Open the continued public hearing.
We can have it without them.
I misspoke. We have subsequently heard that the organization that has rights over the property has come to an agreement with the applicant, so that they do have, am I phrasing that right?
Just to clarify.
Yes, please.
So the applicants have submitted a proposed license agreement, which would allow them ingress and egress over the existing driveway, which is on the Winnicke Land Trust property. That does not grant legal ownership over the property, but it does give them more rights than they had when they first applied to the board.
Maintenance?
They're going to have to maintain it, keep it in good condition, and I believe they had already submitted a contract with snow clearing and ice removal service to that extent as well, so that emergency access would be able to reach the site.
Okay. That's good clarification. So we have clarification, then, that the owners of the House have an agreement there, which answers the questions that this board had. Any other, are there any other comments from the board members? Any concerns?
No.
Anybody from the public? I see none, no hands raised. Then I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Donnelly, I think you have a resolution there. Would you be so kindly to read it?
Resolution to grant area variance, Steven Spice Handler and Fritzi Brown, 22 Van Workplace, Hyde Park, New York, February 28th, 2024, resolution number 23-16Z. Whereas the applicants, Steven Spice Handler and Fritzi Brown, have submitted an application for an area variance to change the required minimum frontage in order to obtain a building permit to allow the installation of an electrical generator at property located at 22 Van Workplace, Hyde Park, New York, 12572, identified as tax parcel number 6164-01-077716, in the neighborhood zoning district. Whereas the applicant seeking area variance from zoning law section 108-4.E. to allow a minimum frontage of zero feet or 25 feet is the minimum frontage required. And whereas the applicants have sought and obtained an opinion from the fire department dated January 23rd, 2024, regarding the sufficiency of an existing driveway to provide emergency vehicles access to the residence. And whereas pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence is type 2 under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is not subject to review under the Act. And whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law, section 108-33.6B2, regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The driveway is existing and will remain in the same location. As such, there is no change of the character of the neighborhood nor an effect to nearby properties. Two, the benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The subject property lacks frontage to any public or private road. Access to the property is over an existing driveway, which is an acknowledged and permitted encroachment over adjoining property owned by the Winnicke Land Trust. Applicants have obtained a license agreement from the Winnicke Land Trust to specifically allow for the continued use of the driveway for ingress and egress to the property. Winnicke Land Trust, in its discretion, has not agreed to transfer legal ownership of the driveway to the applicants. Therefore, the only feasible way for the applicants to obtain a building permit for the standby electrical generator and future building permits is through the grant of a variance. Three, the requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant seeks 100% variance to reduce the required frontage on a road from 25 feet to zero feet. That being said, the circumstances in this matter are unique, as a property is accessed via the existing encroachment driveway, which, though not legally owned by the applicants, provides 7.5 feet of frontage. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse impact, I'm sorry, adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The driveway exists and, as such, will not have an impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the nearby properties. Five, the difficulties are not self-created. Although applicants purchase a property as-is, legal frontage on the roadway, i.e. ownership over the driveway, can only be established with the consent of the adjoining property owner. While Winnicke Land Trust has offered a license agreement for the applicant's continued use of the driveway, there has been no arrangement, no agreement to transfer legal ownership rights over the same. Be it further resolved, but the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise this variance is revoked. Number two, payment of all fees.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Donnelly has moved this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. All right. I have missed one of the agenda items, and that is the approval of the minutes for October 25th. Madam Secretary's done an excellent job in revealing our comments on the 25th, and I would move for approval of those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's go to the second public hearing, and this is Arietta, 609 Salt Point Turnpike. This is for an extension of the variance granted last year to change the rear setback from 50 to 15, and to change the side setbacks from 25 to 15, and to change the impervious coverage from maximum 15% to 20%. I would move that we open the, and continue, we, okay, I've got to figure out how to say this. We want to open the public meeting, which is being continued from last month.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Board. Long time no see. Chris Marta, 28 LLC, on behalf of Jesse Arietta.
And we, four of us had the opportunity individually to visit the site and to talk to Chris about the project. Can you sort of bring us up, you've made some changes since we last talked in terms of improving where you are relative to the variance, I believe.
Correct. I've recently, through colleagues and through an applicant at the planning board for the town of Isopus, came into knowledge of a material called TrueGrit, which is essentially a 0% impervious material. So I am happy to report that we will not need variance from 15 to 20%, and we'll be able to retain the 15% impervious as per the code. So that was a great find.
That is a great find. Is there any change in the setbacks?
No.
Those remain the same?
Those remain the same.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
None.
I think you came up with an idea where you might be able to settle, a little concern that the neighbor had about window viewing, maybe with some trees.
Right. I did some researching into plantings, spoke to the owner about it, and we're looking at coniferous things like green giant, I think it's called, to potentially sort of shield.
Be on the west side of the property.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
To aid in the sort of, you know, sightlines.
Okay. Good.
So the client is very amenable to that.
Okay. Good.
The client, the owner.
Any other, any other things that we need to know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other public comments, questions? Questions of the board? Yes. Chair?
We appreciate everything you've done to satisfy.
Yeah, we appreciate the conversations you've had and the willingness to do that.
No, thank you. I appreciate that, and sitting on, as I sit on the planning board for the town of Isopus, I'm always very appreciative of the effort that the applicants put in, so I only feel it's unnecessary that I practice as I preach.
There being no other public comments, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I believe we have a resolution. Mr. Perkins?
Resolution to re-grant area variances, Jesse Arata, 609 Salt Point Turnpike, Hyde Park. Resolution number 222OZ-2.
Rich, could you please pull your microphone a little closer? Thank you very much.
A little weak tonight. Whereas in 2022, the applicant, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Jesse Arata, the applicant, submitted an application for three area variances related to the demolition and reconstruction of a single-family residence, which would be considered the project from here, at property located at 609 Salt Point Turnpike, identified as tax parcel number 626302851768, in the Greenbelt zoning district. Whereas the applicant authorized designer, Christopher Marta, represented her interest in this matter before the zoning board appeals, and whereas the project is depicted on a sketch prepared by the applicant's representative dated October 7th, 2022, entitled Arietta Residence 21008. And whereas the applicant sought an area variance for the zoning law section 108-5.15 to permit the building of a new home with a 15-foot rear yard setback where 50 is required. And whereas the applicant sought for an area variance for the zoning law section 108-5.15 to permit the building of a new residence with a 15-foot side yard setback where 25 was required. And I think we can delete and strike the next one.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
As it relates to the impervious variance.
Okay. Whereas pursuant with 6 New York CRR 617.5C17, the granting of this area variance for a single-family home, two-family home, three-family residence, type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and such, was not subject to further review under the Act. Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 108-33.5F2 of the Hyde Park zoning law regarding the requested variance extension. Since the grant of the variance is on November 17th, 2022, I was here on my anniversary, by the way, the applicant was made, has made preliminary progress on the project, tested and abated the subject property, demolished the old structure on the site, and has taken other actions to prepare the site for proposed construction. Applicant has faced delay due to difficulty in retaining a satisfactory general contractor and could work within, that could work within applicant's financial constraints. Applicant anticipates the construction will commence on the site within one year of this Be it therefore resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance extension, subject to the following conditions. The conditions of the November 17th, 2022 resolution shall remain unchanged. The authorized activity shall commence within one year from the date of this issuance, otherwise the variance granted on November 17th, 2022 shall be deemed revoked. Payment of all fees.
Mr. Perkins has moved the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All in, Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. Chris, good luck. We look forward to the new technology on the driveway. I think that's significant.
I'm getting a few samples. I'll get you some.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah.
Great. And good luck.
Thank you.
Our next item is the NRA CIA Hotel and Villas requesting a number of variances for this property, which we will be discussing here. I would move to open the public hearing, which is continued public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
We have before us basically five, you're asking for five variances. Three of those are temporary, and I'm assuming temporary is less than a year? Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. And two permanent variances. One permanent variance is to allow parking to be close to the property line, and the second is to allow the construction of a swimming pool close to the property line as Let me open that. Has there been any change in terms of the program or the design?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, we, do you have a question? You raise your hand?
None.
Oh, okay. We received a letter from the county indicating general approval, with the exception of the temporary variance on the land close to the pool that you have to change. What I'd like to do is have some discussion about that variance and the permanent variance for the pool. Is there some way to look at that? We're talking about 25 feet from the pool incursion on the 100-foot corridor for the property line, and I'm just wondering if there is some way to vary that pool a little bit to eliminate the need to put the permanent change of the variance for the pool.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as we stated in our response to the county letter, and we tried to describe and demonstrate to the board, this is an extremely constrained site between the various setbacks, the pre-contact areas, the archaeological areas, the wetland areas, and alike. There's very little room to work with and to still, which was one of our goals, maintain the topography and the natural surroundings. We wanted to, for example, on the variance, which is a temporary grading variance that the county objected to, one of the, one of the benefits of that natural grading, which will all be replanted, was if we didn't have that variance, because of the topography of that corner, that area, we'd have to build a 12-foot retaining wall. Instead of now, that'll be a five-foot retaining wall and a natural grade of which will be replanted, as we said, with tent trees and alike. So, you know, it's, we really struggled with limiting the variances and limiting the disturbance. I mean, that was a goal of ours. That was the, that's the only, you know, that's the only encroachment into that entire wetland corridor that runs the entire boundary of the site, and it'll be a temporary one. So I would respectfully submit, we tried our hardest to really minimize and avoid as many variances as possible, and we're really, at this point, pretty constrained.
Would some, would some change in how the pool is configured? Because that's pushing your temporary, that's pushing your temporary variance for the land. If that was reorient, I've been looking at the picture that you have, that you've submitted here, and at the angle of the pool, and I'm not an engineer, and I don't pretend to understand all of this, but is there, is there something that could be done? 25 feet does not seem like a lot either way. I'm sure 25-feet incursion doesn't seem like a lot either.
Again, I'm not the architect, but we really worked with the architects to minimize them. You've got that pre-contact area right there. A lot of the, I can, I can assure you that, and again, I'm not the architect, but I've been around the architects. I mean, they, they struggle with design. I mean, that was a big, big, big part of their dealings with this site, to maintain the natural surroundings, get the right visuals, you know, create as much of a natural area with the least amount of intrusiveness. So is all I can, I can say, Mr. Chairman, is they really tried, that if that's how it ended up, that's because they really worked hard to design it in a way that minimized the encroachment and maintained the character of it, and maintained the character of the area. I, you know, otherwise, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have made those, we would have done it as-is.
Do you have a cross-section of where that takes place that we can look at?
We don't have a cross-section. We don't have a cross-section.
Can you sketch one on a piece of paper real quick?
Sure.
I mean, you're referring, you're referring to the rear, where the pool is and the wall that was being discussed?
Right. In other words, where it is today and what you're changing it to? Is that possible?
Yeah, I can, I can sketch something up, and I think that actually leads to what my discussion was going to be. Michael brought up a number of constraints in that area that he alluded to. The other one is the Winnicke Conservation Easement that's located within there. So within the Winnicke, between our Winnicke and our property line there, it's a narrow swath of building area, and we're also challenged, that's one of the most challenging locations on our site, is the topography within that area. We're dropping a significant distance over a short, and we're trying to squeeze in a roadway that provides not only an accessible route for vehicles, but we have sidewalks along here that we're creating ADA accessible routes. We have to provide some parking within the frontage of our, the spa area, and also have fire truck circulation within there. What that's doing is further pushing the program to the northern property line. And what we've tried to do within there is eliminate, because there are going to be, let's not forget, part of this project is going to be an integration of trails from this site into the FDR estate. And so as those trails meander along the northern side of our site, we're trying to eliminate those large-scale retaining walls, which then become a focal point as you're walking through the woods, as opposed to, as Michael spoke to, walls that are maybe five feet, a little bit more manageable in size. And then we're going to be adding, I think, in this particular location, which, you know, is only 2,000 or less than 2,000 square feet, it's going to be densely populated with not just small trees, but, you know, they're putting in trees three-to-five-inch in diameter within there. And I think there might have been, it's either 11 or 13 is what we, we spoke of in our, in our variance application. So when you look at, you know, that's almost one per 100 square feet of the size tree that you're putting on. I mean, these are three-to-five-inch caliber trees. You know, they're not small trees. So the challenges with that, you know, as I said, the topography really warranted, I think, it warranted for a better design.
Will you have to remove rock to get enough room for a tree ball?
It's likely we're going to have to remove rock vertically in the ground in order to have adequate room for a tree ball, you know? For something of this size, you're going to want to have at least three feet of suitable soil to plant there for it to survive. You don't want to place it sitting on top of a rock.
Right.
And then try to fill around it, because it'll die.
Okay. That does change some of the subterranean way that the water moves through there. So, I mean, I don't know what the impact is going to be. I mean, I drive on roads all the time. I see, you know, where they, they cut through for the road, you see the water just bleeding out, and you know that that water used to go to the other side, right? So I, I.
Well, yeah, the, when you're, when you're cutting into a slope, that's water that used to flow below ground.
Yeah.
And it came out at a certain elevation. And when you make that cut there, normal engineering practice, typical practice is you would incorporate some sort of a French drain at varying locations.
Yep.
So that you're capturing all that groundwater, and you're not introducing it to the surface, because that's the introduced erosion along the side slope. But I, but I do think, you know, as we're talking about the removal of some of the unsuitable material, and by unsuitable material, I'm referring to rock, you know, it's creating also another avenue to introduce water to the new trees that are being planted there.
Respectfully, this is, you know, if you look at it, this is only 25 feet into the encroachment, so you still have another 75 feet of buffer.
Could you come up with a minute? Because I've got that same map, but I'm still.
So is it, is it gonna, is the, is the water gonna flow towards the grid?
Yeah.
It currently, it's just here, here.
Right.
And it's like this.
Right.
When you go out there.
So.
So when you're trying to build a road here.
So when you're, when you're, when you're building the road here.
Yeah.
And then you have to have access, or fire truck access as well, your, this is your existing grade, here's your proposed grade. So now, in the back, you know, you have your building, I'm sorry for my glasses, and then the pool, you know, now you're kind of like this. So do you want? So do you want this high wall sticking up as you walk along these trails? I mean, this trail goes right along the back of this.
Yeah.
So you're gonna, you're trying to avoid, I mean, a 12-foot-high wall is going to be in the center of the roses in this picture, but, or do you want something scalable like this, which you can obscure with the vegetation that's being proposed?
So the wall would be on which side of the path?
So the wall would be right here, along the pool line there.
Now, if you move the pool line, do you still need, because you're, the pool, you're asking for permanent variance on the pool. Is there, if you move the pool, would that make any difference?
Can I just respectfully, we, this, this permanent one, the one, the one setback is not, it's not to the stream corridor, it's to the setback, and the FDR, oh, I'm sorry, and the FDR approved and consented to it. I mean, they had no problem with it. When you look at the amount of buffer in between the two properties, I mean, it's, they were fully, you know, consenting and approval with it. And as far as the temporary grading one, the small one, again, the efforts we made to, when you look at this, compared to the, so that's the one in the stream corridor, the temporary one.
Correct.
This is the property one, which the FDR consented to because, look, this is all natural. But you look at the entire stream corridor, 100 feet all the way along, that's it. That's that little 1,700-foot encroachment. I mean, we really, it's not going to, we've done all the studies, the town planning board made us do the studies. This is not going to have any
And they didn't have you do a cross-section for them?
We did various cross-sections throughout this.
Okay.
That wasn't one particular location, but
We did habitat assessments and everything, and this, this was not considered within this whole stream corridor to have any, any impact on the habitat, connectivity, fragmentation, any of the things that the stream corridor is meant to preserve. Water quality. We, we studied, we had, we did three, three habitat assessments on that.
The planning board specifically asked for a wide, like, floor study.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I do want, somebody brought up, and I'm not sure who it was, but
Can you push the pool back?
Yeah.
So, and before we came to you, you know, we looked at how we can minimize the original variances on this. So the original variance has had a deck going all the way around the pool. So we have one complete side, which is the long side, which we've eliminated the deck for. And as you can see with this, you know, irregular configuration, we really only have deck area kind of on the eastern, eastern edge here. By moving the pool further to the south, we're decreasing the area available to the patrons. I mean, the pool size is the pool size that's based upon the number of guests that you're going to have at your establishment. There's no room to shrink that down unless you just eliminate an entire pool.
Or reduce guests.
Or reduce the entire program. So
Can we have the, here's the pre-contact areas.
Well, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I understand all of this, and it wouldn't, I'm just wondering if we're in the pool.
So, and, and, yeah, and if you look at, you know, once again, very limited grading, I mean, you're coming around this corner, and the last thing you want to see, looking, I mean, just, just my personal opinion, you know, as someone that goes hiking, I don't want to see a large-scale wall in front of me as I come around this corner, you know. I'm, I want to see something smaller level that's screened by the trees in this area.
That's all to be replanted.
So it's a temporary setback for permanent grading work?
It'll be permanent grading work.
Natural grade.
Maybe that's what the county saw, I don't know.
Well, the county had no issue with the pool and the wall where it is. They had an issue with the grading, but from our standpoint, you know, once again, you don't want a wall to dominate your view as you're coming through this corridor. And that's, that's an aspect that, you know, a number of the team members, including the client, feel it's going to take away from, you know, the, the
Yeah.
The trails, the sense, you know, the sense of, you know, woods through that area, you know, to have a man-made structure of that size.
Would it be reasonable to get a revisit from the county, or?
No.
No?
I know, yeah, I hear what they said, I mean, the county has said, it's really up to us.
And just, just a reminder for the board, because the county did object to that fifth variant for the temporary grading, for the board to grant that variance tonight, you would need a majority plus one, which would be four members, to vote the affirmative. And then we would send to the county an explanation of the reasoning why this board would overturn their objection.
Okay. And remember, the, the planning board also took a very intensive look and robust at these and understood and did a, you saw the negdeck, the full, pretty intensive negdeck, and, you know, understood that, as Chris said, we, I think, we minimize, we reduce the encroachment from our last, the last proposal we gave you in that area. So we, we have already attempted to, quote-unquote, mitigate it.
Can I make a change before we read the resolution?
Certainly.
I was just going to say that we add in number five, after the section where it says for grading work, for permanent grading work. So that it, we acknowledge that there's a permanent change.
Okay.
With that, are you
Fast, Mike.
Gus? Mr. Donley, you had some questions?
My only concern is that this is temporary, so I'm confused why the county has such an issue if it's going to be temporary.
Well, I think as the discussion is temporary, but there is some significant change there in terms of the elevation. Am I, am I correct in that?
You're accurate in that.
Okay. Not correct, but accurate.
Well, I think you used the word tremendous, I don't know, seven feet, it's subjective.
Okay.
When you're talking about the Matterhorn, insignificant.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Agawal?
I don't have any comments.
I have one more comment. Would you be willing to give us a cross-section in the future?
Yeah.
Just so we, we can understand it better, that's all.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good. Anything from counsel?
No comments for me. I can make amendments to the text of the resolution as
I think with this conversation, we'll just go with full resolution.
As board does.
All right. Are there any other public comments?
Do I have to make official resolution to do that and get approval?
Uh, no, because that would, that would only need to be done if you had already voted on it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, then, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Therefore, Mr. McNary gets to read. Now, let's make sure we have This is a resolution to grant five area variances for the CI NRI Hyde Park, 1995 to 2066 Campus Road, grid 606302-889857, on February 28th, 2024, Resolution 23-19Z. Whereas the applicant, NRA Hyde Park LLC, with the consent and approval of owner Culinary Institute of America, has submitted an application for area variance for the construction of a lodging facility at property located at 1995-2066 Campus Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel 606302-889857 in the St. Andrews District and Corridor Business District. Whereas the project is depicted on rendering site plans, a civil site plan, and visual prepared by Labella Engineering and by Jensler Architects. Whereas the applicant seeks the following area variances. One, to allow the setback of 64 feet from the north boundary of the zoning district where 100 feet is required pursuant to Section 108-5.13C9C. Two, to allow a setback of 127 feet from Route 9, whereas 150 feet is required pursuant to Section 108-5.13C9A related to the creation of an 18-space parking lot. Three, to allow a temporary setback of 2 feet, 98 feet encroachment, whereas 100 feet is required in the Margi, I'm not sure if I, Margi?
Marichi.
Thank you. It's, must be, it must be Irish pronunciation. Kill Stream Corridor Buffer pursuant to Section 10843G2A for grading work related to the construction of a pedestrian bridge and associated access path. Four, to allow a temporary setback of 91 feet, 9-foot encroachment where 100 feet is required in the
Marichi.
Margi, thank you. I'm glad you're here. Kills Stream Corridor Buffer pursuant to Section 108-4.3G2A for grading and drainage work related to the construction of an emergency access drive. And five, to allow a temporary setback of 75 feet, 25-foot encroachment, whereas 100 foot is required in the northeast Stream Corridor Buffer pursuant to Section 108-4.3G2A for grading work, for permanent grading work associated with construction of a pool. And whereas the sequer, whereas in accordance with the town code and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the planning board classified the project as a Type 1 action pursuant to NYCR 617.5B6I, and declared its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review on August 2nd, 2023. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, Section 108-333.6B2 regarding the requested variance. One, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Requested variance number one, applicant has provided a written consent from the National Park Service, the adjacent property owner to the north, which found the proposed site plan to be acceptable and would not be visible from their property. Applicant additionally conducted a visual assessment via balloon test, which confirmed the project will not be visible from the National Park Service property. Requested variance two, applicant has provided visual simulations of the, sim, not stimulating, everybody, this is stimulating. Applicant has provided visual simulations of the proposed 18-space parking area, which have adequately demonstrated that the lot will not be visible off-site. Requested variance three, the temporary grading work and construction associated with the pedestrian bridge and access path will be internal to the site and as such will not be visible from nearby properties, nor will it be otherwise affect the character of the neighborhood. Let's make sure we got this, okay. Requested variance four, the temporary grading and drainage work associated with the construction of the emergency access path will be internal to the site and will not be visible from nearby properties, nor will it be, will it otherwise affect the character of the neighborhood. Requested variance five, the permanent grading work associated with the construction of the pool will be internal to the site and will not be visible from the nearby properties, nor will it be otherwise affect the character of the neighborhood. Moreover, the applicant has indicated that the area, subject to the temporary grading work, will be restored to its natural condition through the planting of trees and other vegetation. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variances. Requested variance one, applicant has indicated that the proposed location of the wellness building, pool, and spa deck within the northern setback is unavoidable due to a pre-contract, a pre-contact area to the east, the Winnekee Conservation Easement to the south, and the existing natural topography and rock outgrape, outcrops. Requested variance number two, applicant has indicated that the location of the 18-space parking lot was determined due to the existing wetland constraints existing on the west side of the proposed access drive, as well as the existing steep slopes on the east side. The proposed location is the less steep than the surrounding areas and will result in less disturbance to the site overall. Requested variance three, applicant has indicated that the temporary grading work associated with replacing the pedestrian bridge in its existing location will be far less impactful to the environment than moving the bridge to a different location. Requested variance four, the applicant has indicated that the temporary grading and drainage work associated with the improvements proposed for the emergency access drive will be unduly impactful should they be required to relocate the existing curb cut and gravel road to another area. Additionally, such relocation would require additional tree cutting along Route 9, which is avoided by the proposed location. Requested variance number five, applicant has indicated that the permanent grading work associated with the proposed location of the wellness building, pool, and spa deck within the northern setback is unavoidable due to the pre-contact area to be, to the east, the Winnekee Conservation Easement to the south, and the existing natural topography and rock outcrops, which the applicant is attempting to keep undisturbed. Number three, is everybody having fun? Requested variance one, three, and five are numerically substantial. Requested variance number one, the requested variance is numerically substantial, as it will result in a 64-foot setback, whereas 100-foot setback is required. However, the encroachment will not be visible from adjacent properties. Requested variance two, the requested variance is not numerically substantial. The variance will result in a 127-foot setback, whereas 150-foot setback is required. However, the existing hillside will block visibility of the parking lot from Route 9. Requested variance three, although numerically substantial because it will allow a setback of 2 feet where 100 feet is required in the Stream Corridor Buffer, the requested variance is temporary in nature and will lapse upon the replacement of the existing pedestrian bridge. Requested four variance, the requested variance is not numerically substantial, the variance is temporary in nature and will result in a setback of 91 feet where 100 feet is required. Whereover, there will be no permanent encroachment into the setback. Requested variance number five, though numerically substantial, as it will result in a setback of 75 feet where 100-foot buffer is required, the variance is permanently during construction of the pool. The disturbance, we should say, construction of the pool and thereafter. The disturbance area within the buffer will be restored with plantings, and there will be no permanent structure or encroachment, no, I'm sorry, corrected. There will be a permanent structure, encroachment within the buffer.
Oh, just to clarify.
Permanent grading, no structure.
The grading work will be permanent, but there will be no structure itself within the buffer.
So there will be no permanent structure or encroachment within
Yeah, the wall will be outside the Stream Corridor Buffer.
I stand corrected. Thank you. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Requested variance one, applicant has adequately demonstrated that the proposed location of the spa and pool deck will not have a visual or physical impact on the neighboring property to the north through visual assessments and input from the National Park Service, the neighboring property owner. Requested variance number two, the 18-space parking lot due to the existing hill and trees will not be visible from Route 9. Applicant has adequately shown the lack of adverse impact through visual assessments. Requested variance number three, the grading work associated with the replacement of the pedestrian bridge will be temporary and will occur in an area which is already disturbed. There will be no new permanent structure within the affected Stream Corridor Buffer. Requested variance four, the requested variance will allow the applicant to perform grading and drainage work to improve the existing gravel drive. There will be no permanent encroachment, and the general neighborhood or district shall not be impacted. Requested variance number five, the requested variance shall allow permanent grading work to be completed and
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
We can just strike the word temporary and just state, shall allow grading work to be completed.
Will be permanent?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's understood, I think.
Yeah. Once it's done, it's done.
Okay. So, as, will show, will allow permanent
Grading.
Grading. Work to be completed and will result in no, it will result in a, will not result in a permanent structure within the Stream Corridor Buffer.
Correct.
Applicants shall have adequate erosion Applicants shall have adequate erosion and sediment controls while the grading work is performed and there should be no direct impact on the habitat or water quality of the Margi.
Marichi.
It could be Margi.
I would hope the audience wouldn't laugh quite as loud.
I don't find it funny one bit.
The M kill, the disturbed area swill will be restored to their natural condition upon completion of the project's construction. Number five, the difficulties are self-created. Applicants obtaining their least interest for the site as is, be further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions. Number one, requested variance three, four, and five will be, three and four will be temporary
Yes.
During construction of this project, there will be, there will be no permanent structures located within the setbacks or stream corridor, that's correct.
Correct.
Pursuant to Section one oh eight, dash, thirty-three point five F one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Payment of all fees escrow. I have moved this resolution
Second.
Second. Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We don't want to see you for a while.
One year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your patience.
We thank you to be around for, for all your
And do we get pool passes? Absolutely, okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Now we go on to the interesting areas, the public hearings, the new public hearings. Next page, okay. New public hearing, the Quality Inn, Resolution twenty-three dash eighteen Z. Good evening.
Hello.
We're looking for, let me just state this, allowing a sign face of thirty-nine point nine square feet, where thirty square feet is the maximum, and Section one oh eight, twenty-four, two F, to change the letter heights from the maximum permitted eight inches to twenty-eight inches for the letter Q and to fourteen point six five inches for the word quality.
Just, just to clarify, the maximum allowed by the code is ten inches and it would be up to twenty-eight point five, I believe you said eight inches earlier.
Okay. I, Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, then I would move for, to open the new public hearing for the Quality Inn, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Hello, I'm Jen Biker from Timely Signs, representing Blink Signs, who is the sign company hired by Quality Inn.
Okay. Good. Tell us a little, we, we talked a little bit about this.
Yes. So the Quality Inn is looking to put new faces in the existing sign box to come up to the standards of the Choice Hotels. The current letter Q is forty-four and a half inches, the proposed Q is going to be twenty-eight and a half inches. The current word quality is sixteen inches high at its, at its tallest Q there and the new word quality will be fourteen inches high. So we're coming closer to, you know, the regulations but still
Still outside.
Still outside of it but also trying to, they're trying to conform to the Choice Hotels, you know, brand standards.
You're in this, if I understand, you're in the same size, the sign, overall size is not changing.
Correct, correct, the sign box is not changing, the pole is not changing, the light is not changing.
Okay.
We will touch up the paint of the cabinet.
Different colors?
No, still black.
Okay.
Did you, did you want like bright pink or something?
I'm fine. Um, the Q, is that going to be bigger?
It's going to be smaller than what's there now.
Ah, okay, all right. And the other lettering is smaller?
Is slightly smaller, yes.
Okay.
I remember.
Questions on this? Gentlemen, surely most have.
I think we're moving towards compliance, I mean.
Okay. Counselor, anything?
I have no comments.
Anything, anybody from the public? Sir, you have? Oh, okay, I thought we had, I thought we had a live one there, huh? Okay, all right. There being no comments from the public, board members have exhausted their questions, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that, who is it? You?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Bowen.
Resolution to grant area variances, Hyde Park Hotels LLC, Quality Inn, four, forty-one, forty-two Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York, one two five three eight, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen Z. Whereas the applicant, Timely Signs of Kingston, on behalf of owner Hemel Shah, Hyde Park Hotels LLC, has submitted an application for three area variances to alter existing signage, lettering, and configuration at property located forty-one, forty-two Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number six zero six four dash zero two dash nine nine seven six five seven in the corridor business zoning district to accommodate and comply with corporate rebranding requirements and, whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled signage proposal prepared by Blink Signs dated February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and revise December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and, whereas the applicant seeks the following area variances, number one, to allow sign face of thirty-nine point nine square feet where thirty square feet is, is the maximum permitted pursuant to Section one oh eight, dash, twenty-four point two C one B. Number two, to allow a maximum letter height of twenty-eight point five inches where ten inches is the maximum letter height permitted pursuant to Section one oh eight, point, dash, twenty-four, uh, point two F two B for the letter Q. Number three, to allow a maximum letter height of fourteen point six two five inches where ten inches is the maximum height, letter, letter height permitted pursuant to Section one oh eight, point, dash, twenty-four point two F two B for the word quality. And whereas in accordance with the town code and the State Environmental Quality Review, SEQA, the zoning board is required to determine the classification of the proposed project as lead agency, and whereas the applicant submitted a short environmental assessment form dated February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three pursuant to SEQA, and, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section two-six-seven, dash, B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, Section one oh eight, dash, thirty-three point six B two regarding the requested variances. Number one, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed sign is a replacement of an existing sign in the same location, further the sign, size of the sign face shall remain the same as what currently exists. The letter height of the letter Q and the word quality shall be an overall reduction of the existing letter heights, making the sign more conforming. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variances. In order to comply with corporate rebranding requirements, the applicant must replace the existing signage. The requested variance shall result in a sign which will be more conforming than the sign which currently exists. Number three, the requested variances are numerically substantial. The proposed sign face shall remain the same size as the existing sign face, which is thirty-nine point nine square feet, where the thirty square feet is the maximum size permitted. Although the height of the letter Q shall be twenty-eight point five inches, where the code permits a maximum of ten inches, there shall be an overall significant reduction from the existing forty-four point five inch letter height. Similarly, while the letter height of the word quality will be fourteen inches with ten inches in, in the maximum letter height permitted, there will be a reduction from the existing sixteen inch letter height. Number four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Because the sign location already exists, no physical or environmental impact shall occur as a result of the granting of the variances. And number five, the difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following two conditions. Number one, pursuant, pursuant to Section one oh eight, dash, thirty-three point five F one, the authorized activity must commence within, within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked. And number two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bowen has moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the, the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes.
Thank you.
We look forward to the new sign.
Thank you.
And hopefully you can trim the trees on the south side.
No.
I don't think that's been allowed yet.
I don't think that's going to happen, okay, good, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Our next, uh, public, new public hearing is Anderson Center, twenty-three dash twenty-one Z, we're looking for a variance to permit front yard setback of seven feet where fifty feet is required, and to allow wall height of seventeen feet where six feet is the maximum, and to allow letter height of twelve inches where ten inches is the maximum permit. Uh, Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. I would move to open the new public hearing for Quality Inn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Anderson.
Sorry?
It's a typo.
I beg your pardon. What did I say?
Quality.
Oh, beg your pardon, Anderson Center, eleven Hudson Lane, I beg your pardon. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this was, okay, I was just reading. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am very well, yourself?
Good, good.
Brian Watts from Days to Co's Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Anderson School. The, Anderson is currently before the planning board seeking to make additional improvements on site, certain educational improvements, some safety improvements, they're currently there to build a, construct a new Dullinwood residence on the southwest corner of the site, some various onsite storage areas, and also improvements to the entrance, including sidewalks where currently there are none, a large area where buses can discharge, like the loop bus can discharge, um, people out of the roadway and into a dedicated spot, and replace the existing wall and entry gate with a new structure that is a little bit grander than what's there now. And, uh, part of the limitations is, we can't put it too far back, and with a fifty-foot setback, you put it fifty feet away from the road, you're gonna, you're gonna miss it when you go by.
Mm-hmm. And I know you had setback also for people who stopped or let off there, you needed more
Yeah, I can, I can show that.
Yeah.
So, the, I don't know if this comes up to anybody, but I highlighted the existing structure so you can see
Right.
Where we are. The yellow, if, if you can see it right along this dark line, this is the highway, uh, right away, and the yellow line is the area where the existing dry stack stone wall along Route Nine, very typical. Uh, you can, you can see just off into the site distance here, that existing, those existing, uh, stone wall. And the orange here is the existing entryway. Um, it's been there for, for a while, uh, they keep it landscaped, they try to keep it neat, uh, the existing name. They're looking to remove all that and construct a new wall using this color scheme. This is what they, all their structures on site use, these stone colors.
Uh-huh. Is it stone or, or brick?
A stone.
Stone.
Oh, okay. This kind of looks like brick here, no?
Oh, this, this is the same picture, blown up and in color, so it's a little easier to see.
Can you bring it over here, I can't see.
I know, I know what we mean by brick. This is the area of the stone.
Oh, oh, that's not brick at all.
It, it, there is some brick.
Yeah.
The corners are going to have, be a brick element, very similar to, um, the southern entrance at Marist, that kind of style, but the brick is, the, um, stonework is going to match all the on-campus.
Okay.
The stone, is that the wall or is that this structure?
That's this.
This structure, it will be like that.
And is the height, what's the height of the, the one that's there now?
Thirteen feet.
We're going to seventeen feet.
We're proposing the wall itself at sixteen-ten, and I'm just trying to get like a two-inch just in case, it's like a Friday when they set the last stone, it happens, I hate to say, but it does happen, so just a little construction tolerance, uh, they might even be a little under sixteen, maybe they're six-nine.
Okay.
Um, but I'd, I'd hate to say sixteen-ten and it comes back sixteen-eleven.
You don't like the current one, huh? I think it looks nice.
It's a placement of it.
They hired you to build a new one.
They, they
That's what you get paid for.
I'm here to sell a little bit too, um, there, you know, there's a lot of grand structures along Route Nine and, and they're interested in becoming one of those with a very visible entryway. You go by Vanderbilt, so you have a nice, large, you can't miss it.
Vanderbilt is a little different.
A little different.
You'll have a restaurant and an old house there too?
Uh, more of a cafeteria and, uh, some apartments, um, obviously we're, we're not Vanderbilt or Mills or anything, but
The mansion that was there was torn down, is that correct?
It was in, I believe, circa two thousand and fourteen, it was a, um, it started as a small, small, the original, I'm no history buff here, but, uh, part of the church, the original, the pastor, pastor, whoever built that, it was small, early eighteen hundreds, it changed hands through the eighteen hundreds and kept getting larger and larger and larger. Uh, local, uh, trying to remember, there's, his last name started with an L, there was three different primary owners in his property, had L as their last name, and I forgive me for not
They all run together.
Paying him the honor and, and what he, in his history, uh, he was a local politician and
The idea on the wall?
Yes.
Okay. Paul or Jim, anything?
Now, I, I, I appreciate the grand structures, but along Route Nine from, uh, about the post office, right in the middle of town here, the post office and, uh, the library are also stone structures. But actually, Walt and I, the riverside was the entrance to a lot of people's estates.
Yes.
And there's about a dozen existing stone structures on the way
Yeah, well, this stone should emulate some of that.
And that looks nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's tall though.
It is a little tall, we are, um, this, this area here is the proposed discharge for a bus stop, and that is going to walk through a gate, why I say a gate, an archway right here, and, and the width of that, they're trying to kind of keep the aesthetic of a nice, instead of a very short, wide entryway, keeping a, something that's a little bit better proportioned, in their opinion.
They already have a gate a little further in.
Pardon?
The gates, there's a, there's a gate already in.
There is a gate already. Should have put these on two different boards, I apologize. This is existing chain link fence, and it, and it crosses about right here, um, and continues on through here, this is the existing gate during normal operations during the business day of the school, it's usually just opened, and you get free to come and go.
For some reason I thought when I first heard about it, it was, you were going to bring the buses in to discharge them and bring them out, and give them, just a loop in the front, no?
No, uh, they have their own buses that they do travel in and out of, but the loop bus does not, does not come in.
Okay, questions on, on, on the structure as it is now? Questions on, on the structure as it is now? Is there, are we waiting, what are we waiting for from the, are we waiting for the planning board to do any action?
We requested our Hyde Park Planning Board for comments on these requested variances, and we are still waiting for them. We should definitely have them by the next meeting.
Do we wanna approve subject to their? No.
We don't have our. We don't have our.
Okay, okay, all right.
I also like to mention, just while we're here, that the, we also have the variance for the lettering height from 10 to 12 inches. The, the sign is going to be inlaid part of the wall, and it's going to be in a, right across from the archway on the opposite side, on that large, flat face, because these are gonna be mirror in terms of the geometry, and as it is sitting a little bit farther back, it's not right out, right out on Route 9 or anything like that, and they'd like to just have the letters a little bit bigger so you can see them a little easier as you go by.
And it's gonna be on just the one side?
Just, just the one side, correct.
Okay. Good. I think everything is very clear in terms of the application. We are unfortunately waiting for the planning board to give us any, back any comments. Is there any other questions you have on this? I think it's, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Nice presentation.
What, thank you.
Sorry, just a quick question. Because the sign will be visible from Route 9, have we referred this to the planning board for their comments?
That's what we're waiting for.
Yes. Sorry, we, it did come back as a matter of local concern.
Okay, for, for the 239 on for the county.
Right.
Okay, but specifically for the sign, when we referred this to the towns' planning board, where they can grant some leeway on the, on the lettering height?
That's what we're waiting for.
Okay, that's all we're waiting for.
Yeah, and that should come back.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, and we didn't ask for public comment yet.
So, I think we're, we're prepared to make decisions as soon as we hear from them, so I guess what we would like to do then is kind of propose a continuing.
Open up for public comment, anyone who's here to speak on the project.
Is there anybody here from, public comments? Come on, now, don't.
Tom, nothing? Nothing at all, Tom?
No?
I'm sorry.
All right, there being no comments from the public, I would move that we continue this hearing, the public hearing, to March 27th, where we will, at that point, have a response from the Hyde Park Planning Board. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was, I was an aye, but I was too late.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Aye.
Note therefore. Okay, good. I think, very good. I think we understand it.
I like, I like the stone.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be good-looking.
If you ever do go on campus, you can see what that stone will look like on a larger format, scale.
Will any of the current rubble wall be resurrected?
We would. So it could be a little bit. So if anyone has a chance, and you or the public happens to go by, you can see where we're, what I'm talking about. These are the two trees, well, technically three, two trees, that flank either side of the wall. Those are about the extent of where the new wall would go, parallel to Route 9. We will have to take a short little section as the existing dry stack wall does go to the, to those. So any of that wall section, they would, they would use to rehabilitate farther down.
Farther down.
I don't know if, if that's old, I don't know if it's original. I'm pretty certain that they've been maintaining it in its condition currently, so they're gonna, that's a good source, just to move them down and complete the stone wall farther.
Where does the water line go through there? On the inside of the wall?
Yes.
Did they knock it around? When they were, when they were putting, when they were digging for the water line? Did the wall take a beating at that point?
No, I don't think so.
Actually, I believe if you go on Google Earth and their times lapse, I forget which date it was, but when they put it in there, you could actually, the entire Route 9 corridor, you could see exactly where they've disturbed everything. They went right around the section that's in front of our wall. You can see this area that's clear now. It appears that they staged a little bit in there, and the water line goes on the other side, and there's sections where the hydrants are at the location of the, the wall, looks like the wall had been moved over. Again, that's, that flirts with the property line all along Route 9, and that's where they tie into.
Okay, good.
So that, that's probably why it's as in good condition as it is, because it's, I don't think it's, it's been subject to too much work, just as a matter of course, and that Anderson School has maintained that, as people have managed to hit it, essentially.
Excellent, okay. Thank you very much. Did we vote on the continuing? No. All in favor of continuing this public hearing to March 27th, 2024?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
All right, we will see you next. Hopefully, we can close this out, and you can get going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, but not last, Camp Victory Lake. Welcome. You are looking for an extension of the variance that we gave you last year. Change the maximum permitting building height from 35 to 47.7 feet, and change the stream corridor setback from 100 to zero feet from the Fallkill Creek for a stream crossing and other construction encursions. Okay. I would, Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on February 21st, 2024.
Thank you. I would move for opening the new public hearing for Camp Victory Lake.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tom Harvey. I'm an engineer at Renia Engineering. As you mentioned, the two variances in this project were granted about a year ago. One, one variance was for the separation to the stream corridor.
Mm-hmm.
The 100-foot separation, we have to go within that 100 feet to widen the access road to the rear of the property and accomplish some grading for the property. So that request was a variance to reduce that down to zero feet. The other variance was for the height of the building. The height of the building is limited to 35 feet by the code, and the variance that was granted was for 47 and a half feet.
Okay, all right. Has there been any change in the proposed building at all, in terms of these variances?
There's been no change in the proposed building. We were in front of the planning board in January and got an extension from the planning board.
Okay.
We've also been working on the conditions from the planning board, there's about 10 conditions, and I think we have about nine out of 10 of them addressed. So the Health Department is the last big-ticket item for us to address the conditions of planning board.
Okay. Anticipate, timing-wise, do you look for construction this year?
I'm hopeful for that. There's some, there's the planning board stuff, which I would hope we would wrap up, or the, the Health Department stuff, which I hope we would wrap up in the next six months or so.
Okay.
And then it's just a matter of the architecture and building plans getting together. This is a pretty big nut to crack for this building in terms of building plans.
Okay. Is there anything that you would anticipate delaying it, other than routine stuff?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Questions? Mr. Agarwal, did you have a question?
Just, you sort of gave an explanation of why you're asking for an extension. Not much has really been done in the last year due to regulatory things?
We were working on the conditions from the planning board.
For pretty much the last year?
Yes, we got the, the stormwater approval, various other edits that the planning board conditions addressed, and we got our submission into the Health Department, and, I mean, it took us three months to get a response from their office.
Hmm, not good. Okay. Paul?
Yeah, last year, when we voted on the resolution, there were some concerns with the height. And I think it was suggested that they have like a balloon test to see how high it would look in real life. And we also, there was also a suggestion if you could like dig deeper into the earth to bring the height down. Is that, is that any, is there any way that that could, that could happen?
Well, the building already has a below-grade portion, it's about a story, store and a half below grade. So I don't really think we could go much deeper without getting into the water table because of our proximity to the water that's there. If we go much deeper, we're almost surely to be into groundwater.
Because I know the height was a big issue, and I still have some concerns with how high it is.
Yeah, and, and the, the presentation we made was mostly comparing it to the adjacent site, which is higher than this.
I think that was built before zoning, though.
It may have.
I think, so, that's why we have zoning laws.
Mr. Perkins, anything?
At this time?
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
I live at, I own 272 Cromellbo.
Yes, sir.
On the corner.
Please come up.
Excuse me, you need a microphone in your name, please?
This is kind of new to me, and I, it sounds like I need to go investigate some of the planning board activity. Maybe that'll answer some of my questions. Camp Victory Lake has been an excellent neighbor. They hold very few events, and they've all been run very well, and it's been, they've been great neighbors. So what I don't know is what am I gonna see, you know, what's gonna change? Is there some sort of a rendering of, of here it is now and what it's gonna look like?
Are you on the east side of the road?
Where, where are you located?
I'm on the opposite side of the road, whichever that is.
Are you on the east side?
Pull a map if you want to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you, are you toward Connecticut, or are you toward Pennsylvania?
Street address. What's your street address?
Let's see, which way do I head? I head, I guess it's east.
So you're on Quaker or Netherwood?
I'm on Quaker.
Okay.
272 North Quaker.
The corner there, show him the corner.
Yep, so this is the, the north Quaker.
Sorry, I'm just gonna ask that one of you grabbed the microphone.
272.
272. So I'm like over here, probably?
Well, you're not gonna see him.
And this is gonna be way over there.
Right on the corner.
Correct, right on the corner.
And it's set down in the property.
Yeah, this is set down a bunch, and there's landscaping plans, rimmit or the whole with buffering.
Are there going to be any like more frequent events because of this, or is it gonna be increased traffic?
It's, it's a larger building, but they already have those events. They're not planning any major additional events, they're still only a few large events, three to five a year is kinda what they're talking about.
Well, I think they, they actually had a progression of increasing the events over years. I think that was, that was on the chart.
So there, when they have events, it's already a lot of like extra traffic and backups, and, you know, I understand that that's gonna happen.
There's really a lot of buses coming in, too.
That came up a year ago.
It does, it seats 400, 4,000, 500 people.
Yes, yes, and as part of that, we've also had to improve the entrances onto the county road, but widen them now, and when there's, when there's a large event happening, we actually open up a second entrance, and we'll have traffic control on it, so we can get people in and out as efficiently as possible.
Okay, okay. Sure, anything else? Any other thoughts?
I thought I could think of, only that, I'm glad of where it is, it doesn't seem to be impacting me that much.
Yeah.
My neighbor was also concerned, he couldn't be here because his mother is ill. There was some other reference to a creek or something?
Creek is on the north side of it.
Yeah, the existing creek is back here with the pond, and there's a dam at the end of the pond, and our other variance is associated with working within 100 feet of that. So to put a dry hydrant in and to widen the existing road that goes to the back, we've gotta work within that proximity of that waterway.
To go to zero feet, they're gonna put a bridge, they're gonna widen a bridge that goes, already goes across that creek.
Yep, that's right back here, near where the dam and the pond is.
What's on the other side of the?
There'll be parking buses over there. How many?
There's only room for about four buses back there, and there's an existing sewer treatment plant back there.
My only, my main concern would be more frequency, you know, if it's something like, you know, every weekend, or it's significantly increased, then it's gonna, you know, detract from my quality of life, and I'm gonna be soon to be retired, I'm gonna have to live with that.
So, so those concerns would be addressed by the planning board?
Okay, so.
Here, these were variances that were already granted a year ago, they're just, the applicant is just here seeking an extension of time to work.
Then I don't think I have any issues with the variances.
Can you tell us what your last name is, please?
M-A-Z-U-R-E.
Thank you.
Sure.
Missouri?
Missouri.
Oh, like Missouri?
Like the state.
M-A-Z-U-R-E.
Sort of.
Sort of.
Okay.
Okay, good. Other questions, gentlemen? Okay, so I think we are waiting for the, we will continue the public hearing, we've already voted to do that for next month, we're waiting.
So we do have a resolution?
We do have a resolution.
Unless there's.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah. So if the board is inclined, they can move to close.
Yes, I think, yeah, we're ready to vote. I would then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Agarwal, I think you have a, do you?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be opposed, I think we should leave it open another month.
Okay, okay. You have a, go ahead.
Are we leaving it open or are we going forward?
We're gonna read the.
Yeah, that was one vote, the majority voted to.
Resolution to grant area extension of area variances, Camp Victory Lake, 277 Cromellbo Road, Hyde Park, New York, dated today, Resolution 21-15Z2. Whereas in 2022, Camp Victory Lake submitted an application, an area variance, to reduce the stream corridor setback, and a second area variance to increase the maximum building height at property owned by Northeast Conference Corporation located at 277 Cromellbo Road, identified as tax parcel 6265-04-630350 in the Green Belt Zoning District. And whereas the proposed project is depicted on a plan entitled Camp Victory Lake, prepared by Renia Engineering P LLC, dated December 22nd, 2020, and revised April 19th, 2021, and significantly revised February 2nd, 2022. Whereas the applicant sought the following area variances, they requested variances, one, to permit a stream corridor setback of zero feet from the Fallkill Creek for a stream crossing and other disturbance, where a setback of 100 feet is required pursuant to zoning law Section 108-4.3G2A. Two, to permit a building height of 47.5 feet for construction of a stadium-style sanctuary space, where a maximum height of 35 feet is permitted for a building pursuant to zoning law Section 108-5.15 Bulk Regulations. And whereas a duly noticed public hearing was open on September 22nd, 2021, during a duly noticed meeting of the zoning, of the ZPA, and said public hearing remained open during subsequent meetings held November 18th, 2021, December 16th, 2021, January 26th, 2022, February 23rd, 2022, April 20, February 23rd, 2022, April 27th, 2022, June 22nd, 2022, July 27th, 2022, August 24th, 2022, September 28th, 2022, October 22nd, 2022, and November 17th, 2022, and December 15th, 2022, during which times all those who wish to speak were heard. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 108-33.5F2 of the Hyde Park Zoning Law, requesting the variance, the variance, the variance extension. the variance, the variance, the variance extension. One, since the grant of the variances on February 22nd last year, the applicant has made preliminary progress on the project and is in process of working with the Dutch County Department of Behavioral and Community Health regarding wastewater treatment for the site, and is working to satisfy any outstanding conditions imposed by the planning board. Two, applicant anticipates that construction will commence on the site within one year of this extension. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance extension subject to the following two, three conditions. The conditions of February 22nd, '23 resolutions shall remain unchanged. Two, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of this issuance, otherwise the variances granted on February of last year shall be deemed revoked. Three, pay the vol fees and escrow.
The motion by Mr. Agarwal has been moved. I would second the motion. Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
No.
Mr. Perkins?
I'm gonna abstain.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
We can, hopefully you don't come back to us again.
Hopefully, we could get going on this.
Thank you. And just for the gentleman's, Missouri, for Mr. Missouri.
Who?
Is there a way to show him, I know we saw the heights, pictures of the height of the building proposed from the roadway. I don't know if you have that available, but it may give you a better hint.
Is this what you're talking about?
That's, that's one. There was, I know you did some, you did some actual projections.
We have some with the lines for the heights. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and it was, it was projected from the corner of the, of the, between Crum Elbow and Quaker. I don't know if you have that with you or not. While they do that, I see no other, yes, being no other business before the board, I would move for adjournment.
Motion.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Agarwal, you're opposed to adjournment, did I hear?
7:30, let's call for this time.
Okay, all in favor. Meeting is adjourned.